Kate Sheldon, who is the host of the virtual meeting. We will proceed to introductions and housekeeping in a moment, but just a couple of points to note. This meeting is a public meeting and in alignment with the new regulations which permit meetings to be held by remote means will be live streamed for the public to view. To make the meeting run as smooth as possible, can I please ask the participants in the virtual meeting room to leave your microphone on mute when you are not speaking? When you want to speak, please raise your hand to the camera, only on mute when the chair indicates that you can speak. If at any time any member loses the ability to hear or be heard, they must alert the chair or host as soon as possible. You may see members looking to the left and right of their screens. This is because they may be looking at an additional screen or device containing the agenda papers, not because they are distracted. I will now hand over to the Chair of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Jenny, and welcome everybody to what's our last scheduled meeting of the municipal year. A special welcome to those of you who might be tuning in from home if you're there. Thanks for keeping us transparent and open as we can be. So apologies from absence, I've only had the one sent through to me, which was an apology from councillor Lewis Stagnall, substituted by councillor Sean Edmire Richards. Were there any others that have come through?
No Chair.
Okay. I don't believe there's any items for the exclusion of the press or public. So do any members have an interest to declare in this meeting?
Chair, I don't have an interest to declare, but I might need to apologise, I need to be away at seven.
Okay, well, we are scheduled to finish at seven, so we'll do our best to be done by then. I hope colleagues would recognise I've got a good track record in making sure that we steer the ship to be done on time. So I don't think it suits anyone to be sat in meetings like this for too long unnecessarily, and not least the members of the public who do tune in to watch these. So we'll do our best, and if you need to leave, just say so when you go in the chat, so we know for the record at the time. Right, so if we go to minutes of the previous meeting, can we just first of all agree that they're an accurate record? I'll take silence as the affirmation. Speak now, or we'll have a hold your peace? No, okay. Right, so in terms of matters arising, I would just mention, I have emailed you all prior to this meeting, but I'll mention it here because we did discuss it on the work programme, both in this meeting and the meeting before, about having an extra meeting to discuss the housing repairs agenda. That is something that personally I really wanted to have, and I know a number of colleagues on this committee really wanted to get into that because we did have a report that didn't do what we hoped that it would, and it needed scrutinising and following up. As I've shown through the email from the monitoring officer, I've sent you all, so you've got the wording. The advice is not to go ahead with that meeting now, and that it should go ahead after the election due to PUP, and the sort of, I guess, concern that the council could be in violation of those rules if things were to get too political, and the monitoring officer's view was, given the nature of some of the discussions at previous council meetings etcetera, that there was a risk to doing that, I guess to draw a sort of parallel to a precaution we've taken today, is that councillor Wood isn't joining us to mitigate against that risk here today on the monitoring officer's advice. So I think we could only but follow the advice from the monitoring officer in a situation like that. But I will give the committee a commitment that if I am still the Chair in the next municipal year, that it will be the first item on our first agenda when we come back. And if I'm not the Chair, I will recommend to the incoming Chair that it's the first item on their first agenda for the committee next year. Okay. Are there any other matters arising, councillor Sanger?
Thank you Chair, and thanks for saying that. I mean, I very much felt that the report we got wasn't what I expected. There was clearly an issue over the Christmas break, and I was hoping that we'd get a chance to scrutinise it, you know, in this municipal year. You know, the Director of Legal Governance is the Director of Legal Governance, so you know, I think we have to take, you know, we have to take cognisance of her interpretation of PUP. And if she says we can't have the report, then, you know, as you say, have it as our first report back in May. But I do hope that this goes for other committees of the council as well, because I know a report on housing repairs is due to go to Cabinet in a week and a half's time, and it would seem strange that they can discuss reports when they're taking real decisions, when we can't as a scrutiny committee. I think it should be the same, it should be the same strong PUP rules for everybody, and we should have one set of interpretations. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, no, and I would sort of share that concern. I'll quite happily feed that back into the system on behalf of, well, me certainly as Chair, but the committee, if the committee's happy for me to do so. Okay, are there any other matters arising from the minutes? Councillor Murphy?
Yeah Chair, could you just ring us up to date with the request that some kind of formal recognition for the officers and volunteers that presented at our last scrutiny meeting has been carried forward or taken place perhaps?
Yeah, no, that, so that needs to be actioned further, so that we did have an initial email exchange, but we need to do some follow-through on that. So I will undertake to make sure that gets done sooner rather than later. I can't see why that would be a problem to get sorted before the municipal year with PUP. I think it should be fine, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Just for my sanity, can someone put councillor Murphy's hand down? Because I'll keep thinking she wants to speak. So any other matters arising? I'm not seeing anyone else waving, no. Okay. So public questions and petitions, I've not had any knowledge of any. Can I just check that none have come in late in the day? No, okay. Right, so then if we just move on to the first meaty item of the agenda, if you like, item seven, Sheffield Safer and Sustainable Communities Annual Report. We've got Maxine, who we're all quite familiar with, attending these meetings. We've also got Zaffa as well, who's one of the, I forget the exact job title, but the Community Support Neighbourhoods Officers. So I'll let them introduce themselves properly and take us through the presentation. Okay, over to you guys.
Yes guys, I was on mute first one today, so apologies. Thank you councillor Curran, as you all know, I'm Maxine Stavriakos. I'm Head of Community Safety and Safer Neighbourhoods, and I've got today with me two of my colleagues actually. I'll let them both introduce themselves. I think Alan may be having slight issues with his IT because we can't see him, but I'll hand over to Zaffa first.
Good afternoon, thank you for inviting me to this meeting. Firstly, Alan won't be joining us, Maxine is having problems with his IT. So he's still trying to get on, he said he'll probably join us as soon as he gets on. Right, my name's Zaffa, I'm one of the housing wardens for the Sheffield City Council, but recently moved over to community safety. I'm not sure whether you know how the Warden Service first started, so I'll just give you a brief introduction on when it first started and how it's progressed over the years, if that's okay?
I think that, yeah, that's fine Zaff, if you want to go first. And then, yeah, hand over back to me, and then I'll let them know what you're doing later, okay?
The service first started in 2001. It was partly funded by the Sheffield City Council and by the government, Mestablunkay. It was a team of six, what covered Low edges bit more and Jordanfall due to the IASB, the area was suffering in that time. Over the years, the service gradually expanded into other areas, where eventually all areas in Sheffield had a team of wardens. Every team worked to the same focus, but each area had different needs. The main focus was dealing on antisocial behaviour and reducing the fear of crime, working with our colleagues, South Yorkshire Police, Fire Service, Ambulance Service, Youth Offending Team and other agencies what used it in that time. So that's just a brief detail on how the service first started, and that's the reason why we're still here 20 years on unfortunately. I'll pass you back over to Maxine, and then I'll come back and tell you a bit more on what we have done over the years, if that's okay?
So I'll hand over to Zaffa, and if Alan's rejoined us then, so they can tell you the sort of things they're doing at the moment. But I know you've all had my presentation in advance, so I'll not do death by PowerPoint and take you through every point, I'll just pick up some main things. I think a lot of members have met before, and you're aware that we have to by law have a community safety partnership. It's a statutory responsibility for us under the Crime and Disorder Act 1998. There are six responsible authorities, that's ourselves, the police, the fire and rescue service, National Preventions, Probation Services and the Community Rehabilitation Company. And I'm sure you'll be aware that they're joining together into one organisation from June of this year, and that will be called National Probation Services, and also health. But the partnership is led by the local authority and the police. It comes together, expertise, knowledge, consistency of action, and we have a responsibility to reduce crime and disorder. Okay, so that's why we have the partnership. I've also put a slide in the presentation about the current partnership structure, which shows we've got the Community Safety Partnership Board that is chaired by the Cabinet Member for Community Safety, currently Paul Wood, and the Chief Superintendent of Police in Sheffield. And then it has members from all parties. Sitting under that is, I'm sorry, on the presentation it says PPRG, sorry. That stands for Performance Planning and Resources Group, which is the tactical group, which myself and the Superintendent Chair. And then under that are the Priority Theme Groups, and they are based on what all, as you'd imagine, the priorities are for us in Sheffield for the current partnership plan. Okay. We also have a responsibility and a relationship with the Police and Crime Commissioner to work together, again, reduce crime and disorder. The Community Safety Partnership puts our plan together based on analysis and feedback from the six responsible authorities and the partners. The Police and Crime Commissioner puts his priorities together based on community engagement work. And the Police and Crime Commissioner gives us a grant every year into the partnership that helps us to achieve our priorities. Okay, and there's also a slide in the pack about how those priorities work together. So moving on, we currently, the current community safety plan is running for three years, up until 2021. It should have actually started to be renewed already, but because of the issues we're seeing over Covid and we've got slightly unique situation, it was decided by the Chairs it had run on into this year, and we would start the process running from the end of 2021. So at the moment, we're working on putting the next three-year plan together. The current priorities, I think as it's mentioned earlier on, are modern slavery and human trafficking, knife crime, gangs and violence, domestic abuse, hate crime, acquisitive crime, so burglaries and crime from cause and antisocial behaviour. And as I said, the plan's a three-year plan, but every year we carry out the Joint Strategic Intelligence Assessment Review, commonly known as the JSIA, where we look at priorities that are coming in from police recording, from partners, whether on the ground or through their strategic responsibilities. And they then look, are those priorities that I've mentioned there still fit the purpose? So though it is a three-year plan, the priorities get reviewed on an annual basis. So currently in 2021, that funding both from the PCC and some funding that is given from the local authority, out of that money, we're paying for analysts, both in the partnership and at Team 45, which I'll mention in a bit, which is the team that looks at serious organised crime in Sheffield. We're paying for the Hate Crime Coordinator. We're working with colleagues in domestic abuse and a perpetrator programme, and we're also tackling crime, antisocial behaviour. And there's some specific projects in that. One that seems, we have lots of burglaries in student accommodation especially, and I know in slightly different years, but when they come back in September, a lot of students leave doors open or move in between each other's accommodation. And we see an increase in crime, having laptops stolen and other electrical items. So what we did this year with just a small amount of funding, we had some tea towels produced with sort of messages for students. Now I know some people have said, well, do students wash up? But they told us that the tea towels were of use to them. So it's just a sort of, quite a novel way of getting those messages out and helping to reduce crime and burglary in those areas, which has done, we've seen a response to that.
Just send us a picture of one of the tea towels.
Will do. Sorry Sean Ed, I was hoping actually, I should have known, to get one so I could have hold it up to you while I was talking, but I think it will still be en route with us not being in. So yeah, I'll get one with pleasure. So I have included, I know because of what we've mentioned at the start of this, we need to be careful around performance, but I've included some overall performance figures. And the first graph that you've got in your presentation compares Sheffield's most similar groups. Now that's a police terminology, in a nutshell, it generally means the core cities. So it compares as, you'll see along, but Manchester, Birmingham, Newcastle, some of the bigger cities. And you can see there that Sheffield has below average crime rates when compared to other core cities. And I think just to make you all aware, Sheffield continues to be one of the largest safe cities, okay? So that's a reputation we're proud of, and that doesn't mean to say we don't have issues, of course we do, and as members you're well aware of them, but it is one of the largest safe cities, okay? And the core cities are made up with cities that have got similar demographics, social and economic characteristics. So we're comparing like that really. And there's then a graph in the pack that shows you the national comparison, looking at crime per thousand population. Again, we see that rates in Sheffield and South Yorkshire have been going down. Sheffield's the red line at the bottom, so below both the more the colouring line, and the orange line, which is obviously Sheffield, Rotherham, Barnsley and Doncaster, we're below that for most of the time as well. So whether you compare us to core cities, or whether you compare us to our neighbourhoods across South Yorkshire, we, our performance is constantly positive compared to those. Further graph looks at the crime and antisocial behaviour totals, and I've split it down by type in there. So I'll not go through it all, but you can have a look at your leisure, potentially if there's any questions later or at another time, happy to pick them up. It shows on here that two of the main priorities for us again are working on violent crime and on antisocial behaviour. And I think something for us to note is the large increase in antisocial behaviour incidents that happened between April and May last year, and then remained high into the autumn. And this coincided with the introduction of the first lockdown. I think I need to stress to you all here, we've probably not seen the impact of the pandemic totally yet. There are issues that we think are still not coming to the fore, and as we come out of lockdown, we may see, still see more increases there. The last graph in the pack is the pie chart around crime breakdown. And that shows us all crime categories and antisocial behaviour. So we know that 22% are antisocial behaviour, 27% violence and sexual crime, which as I said in the last slide, is why these are some of the priorities for us. And this is for a 12-month period, up until really September 20. So you're getting, we're always working with crime and antisocial behaviour figures sort of a year behind when we're pulling together some of the stats, which is why, you know, I always ask if members are seeing something there and then on the ground, which is if I'm reporting, you think, hmm, that doesn't always feel how it is at the moment. That's something that we really need to hear from you, and I'll want to talk about some of our resources in a minute. So moving on, I've listed some of the partnership activities we're doing at the moment. I mean, despite some of the Covid restrictions, which has cut some of the work we've been able to do with people like some of the boxing clubs and the football clubs getting out to talk to people and work with young people, there's still other work that has been ongoing, and I've listed some of those. We've also seen with Covid that we've got a different sort of feel in the city centre. And I know I came to scrutiny with colleagues a while ago, where colleagues in homeless were talking about some of the work we'd done with the rough sleepers. And one of my officers, Tracy Ford, was also involved because we've not had a dedicated resource to work with people in the city centre, the street begging cohort, and that can be looking at enforcement, but also looking at their vulnerabilities. So we've put a dedicated resource in there. Tracy's working alongside colleagues in the city centre team. She's also working alongside homeless and the police, because this is a far wider issue than just housing. And it's looking at how we can take enforcement action and move it on, but also how we need to provide support to people and coexist in some of these spaces, especially as the city centre is changing. And certainly as Covid and lockdown ends, we expect to see significant issues raised there as well. Our staff in the partnership, from all partners, have contributed to the Violence Reduction Unit Action Plan. And we've got a number of projects such as street doctors who are out on the streets and have given training to young people about first aid and why not to carry knives. We've got a project called Call It Out, which supports victims of domestic abuse in the LGBT community. And just so you know, it's fairly hot off the press, but we're working alongside the Police and Crime Commissioners Office and police colleagues. And we've put in a bid to the Home Office for safer street funds. Now, that was quite, it was linked to burglary or acquisitive crime. And we had to sort of evidence some of the major areas in Sheffield that were being affected. And what came out for us again is around the student accommodation, around Ecclesall Road and Sharrow and some of the roads off there with the houses in multiple occupation. So we've put a bid into the government for cameras on there, either fixed cameras on Ecclesall Road or movable ones around the side streets, and we're just waiting to hear. But as we were preparing this bid, the horrendous news about Sarah Everard came out from London. So we've put in our bid that's working on Ecclesall Road, that also helps us work in the night time economy and to support young people, young women. And we understand from the Home Office that a further 25 million is going to come out in funding and targeted, we think, to this sort of area. So we're in a good position to move forward and make bids there. But at the moment, we haven't got the facts of what those bids and the criteria is going to be. And I did mention obviously previously about the reduced burglary in student accommodation because of the towels. Okay, moving on, I think I've mentioned to you before how we formed the Safer Neighbourhood Services that originally, and I think Zaffa's referred to it at the start of this, sat in the Housing and Neighbourhood Services. Well, as we were working together and supporting communities standing up to what we thought would be coming out of lockdown the first time, it became apparent that we needed to have a joined-up communities offer. So myself and my services now sit in communities. And that has also allowed us to look at, again, working alongside colleagues, but also look at additional funding into community safety. Because I think I've been coming around to some of the local members' meetings and talked about how we had cut the budget in the past linked to the financial hardship and the measures coming out from the government. But it's now allowed us to put some more resources in, which is why I asked Zaffa and Alan, if he's able to join us, to come along today, because we will see the Safer Neighbourhood Wardens considerably increase as we go forward and linked into the local area committees and having a resource in all neighbourhoods. And we're also bringing back what some of you will have known, I think, in the past as the Safer Neighbourhood Officers. And I think I got mixed feedback from yourselves around Safer Neighbourhood Officers, and sometimes they seem to be more like quasi-police officers, and I got that 100%. So as we're reintroducing them, though they will be linked very closely with the police neighbourhood teams and will work closely with the inspectors in each case, they are very clearly council officers, and they know from me, I expect them to challenge police colleagues and work very much alongside yourselves. We're also wanting that communications will improve when they're in place, because they will have access to police systems. So I know you get the weekly councils update from your neighbourhood inspector, but I think sometimes we could do better than that in certain neighbourhoods. And that's why we need these Safer Neighbourhood Coordinators in place. And though they have been interviewed, they know who they are. We need to get them police vetted and access to the police system. So if you'll bear with us for a little while yet, they'll be in place over the next couple of months. We are also reinstating the neighbourhood action groups. And again, I don't want you to think this is just going round in circles. I think as we lost both neighbourhood policing and the community safety neighbourhood staff, we could no longer service this neighbourhood action group. There were no teams that were responsible. Well, of course, the police have now had neighbourhood policing in for the last couple of years. We introduced our resource, so we will form those neighbourhood action groups. But they will also very much link into the local area committees. So it'll be the same sort of process about getting information to you, whether it be confidential or more general, involving members and community groups. But there will also be a new look to them because of the links with the committees. We also need to re-establish, I'm not sure if you'll be aware, in community safety, we had the community justice panels, which was restorative justice. Well, obviously down to Covid, I'm afraid we've lost all the volunteers. We couldn't have those panels meeting where people can be in receipt of community justice rather than getting a criminal record. So we will get those set up again. Alongside that sort of community safety team, we're beefed up with more resources. I'm also going to establish a multi-tenure antisocial behaviour team. I think for tenants living in social housing, whether it's the council's own stock or some of the registered landlords in the city, they obviously have staff working for their landlord that supports them or takes action for antisocial behaviour. If you live in private rented or potentially own your own property, if you're a victim, the only place you have to go is the police. Though they obviously deal with serious antisocial behaviour. They don't always have a resource to deal with some of the more um, the more basic, but that can still be making a real misery for some people. So we will be setting up this multi-tenure antisocial behaviour team so that we have a resource that can support all people. Um, what we need to be careful though of, even though there are more officers, um, it's looking at what sort of cases they'll deal with linked to vulnerable people. Um, and we, as they form, we will get advice out to all members and contact who you uh speak to in your area. And again, these officers will be very much linked into those local area committees. We'll look at a matrix management of those. And they will also work alongside the Safer Neighbourhood Wardens, which Zaffa will talk to you about in a bit longer. We've also got the Prevent Team in there, the Hate Crime and Police colleagues. Um, and um probation and fire and rescue, which I'll not dwell on at the moment. And as I said, we work very closely with the Violence Reduction Unit. And there's a slide in there setting out how we work together. There is a Violence Reduction Action Plan. Um, we produced it for the first time last year, linked to the sixteen priorities that the Violence Reduction Unit had identified. You would think sixteen priorities are enough for us, but in Sheffield, we ask for a seventeenth priority to be involved linked to poverty. That was an issue at the time. And I think again, as we see communities come out of lockdown and four more people probably in that poverty bracket before that, that's going to be a growing issue for us linked to illegal money lenders. Um, people maybe turning to crime if they're struggling to live. So um the fact that we have the action plan with the Violence Reduction Unit that also identifies for us gaps in Sheffield. And when Violence Reduction Unit looks at handing out grants and funding, they will always be linked to the gap. So Sheffield gaps may be different from Barnsley, Rotherham and Doncaster. So it's vital we, that action plan uh set out and cover all those. We also work alongside Operation Forty Five, which I'm sure you'll have heard mentioned. But Forty Five, it's a South Yorkshire brand dealing with serious organised crime. Slightly different in Sheffield because we set it up. Um, we have a, a multi-partner team. It involves police, local authority, um immigration, regulatory services, the D W P. To make sure that however we want to look at disruption, we've got somebody in there. Because certainly I'm sure as you'll be aware, sometimes, for instance, our private housing colleagues will be able to enter a property where maybe police wouldn't and it's joining that information up. Um, and that team deal with the proactive disruption of organised crimes. They seize assets and um they execute warrants, drug seizures. Uh, and there's a list of other issues in that slide that they cover. Also, we've got the Amber Project in there. So it's coordinating support services very much with vulnerable adults and children. And when we were looking to establish a, a larger neighbourhood warden service, I was talking to some of my colleagues in the vulnerable children's team. And they were saying, Maxine, they'll be crucial for us because they're eyes and ears on the street. And we get cases coming to us, but it's usually when we've already moved on and there's an evidence of children being criminally exploited here. And having somebody that's on the street and saying, oh, that, that looks a bit funny. Why, why are they always talking to kids and things? So um that's sort of the, one of the roles of the wardens. And also to hear from yourselves because quite often, well, frequently, you're hearing the things on the ground as well. So um it will be feeding through us there. So I thought, all right, um, just a couple of so what's linked to Forty Five? I won't go through them because you've got them in the slide. But um just to give you an example of how it's really benefiting and, you know, the, the case in that first um incident, if you've had a look at it, where we've, we, a male adult was being exploited in the city. His property was being cuckooed. We got people coming and going, dealing drugs. Um, and he, he's, he had no life at all. He was being exploited. We managed to work with him. He gave police and ourselves a lot of information and we've got him out of Sheffield. I won't give you any uh sort of details because um I don't want to say anything that could identify him. But he has emailed us back and said, I've got a job, I've got a life back, I can't thank you enough. Um, that's a one-off case, but there, there are others, okay? Um, so I think, sorry, I'll pull up through some of that. I hope that gives you a good feel um of, of where we are and what we're doing and how we're really moving on. I come annually to this meeting and sometimes that, even for me, who a lot of you know, I'm always a glass half-full person, sometimes it's been difficult to be positive. But it's, it, there's a different feel this time. It doesn't mean as a city we haven't got issues um linked to crime and antisocial behaviour, of course we have. But I'm now getting a service that we can work and we can start to address some of those. So um I'm going to hand over to Zaffa and if Alan's managed to join us about some of the stuff they do, just to give you an idea on the ground. But um Ben, I'm not sure if there's, if you want to take any questions from me first or you just want me to hand over to Zaffa.
No, I think if we hand over to Zaffa and then I'll take questions and comments on
Okay.
Sort of everything to do with the report.
Okay, Zaff.
Over to you, Zaffa.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Unfortunately, Alan's not with us.
Okay.
Right, uh, right. I've, I've been asked by Maxine to gear a brief outlook on what, on what the Warden Service can do on the roll out of the new service and what it's done uh in the past, working with South Yorkshire Police, Youth Defending Team, Fire Service and, and other agencies. Uh, I'll just start by telling you about the Operation Shield that we did two years ago in uh in Glegel's Valley. This was to do with Smart Water. Uh, the area was picked because of the high rate of burglaries that the area was suffering. Uh, so it was funded by South Yorkshire Police. As partners, we help the PCSOs and the police officers to deliver four thousand five hundred leaflets to every property in Glegel's. Uh, the main point of this was the police priorities and the council's priorities, which was targeting, that's targeting areas where I, ASB burglaries, engagement, talking to the public, reassuring the public. And the third one was problem solving. Uh, this was spotting areas where we could resolve a problem before it happened, if we could. So we were like focused on these three points. What we did with Smart Water, like I said, we delivered four thousand leaflets. Then we did some cold calling, uh, then it went to an, to an appointment. Only, uh, this is because obviously people were out working. So we made appointments, we did it during the day and in the evening till around eight o'clock at night. Uh, what this entailed is, it's, Smart Water is a, it's a liquid base. It's a unique number to a certain property. It's got, it's got a code on the bottle. It's unique to that address, nobody else's. So you can't pass that liquid on to anybody, it has to stay within that address. So what we did there was, we marked up any valuables, what the residents wanted to mark it up, i.e. jewellery, TV, mobile phones, bikes, computers, music systems. Anything they wanted, it got marked up. And it just entailed just putting a little dot of this Smart Water on. And it can only be seen under fluorescent light. You can't see it just by shining a torch on because you won't see it at all. This happened over a six-month period. Uh, and I, I did a bit of back work, background on it on Monday because obviously it was two years ago. Uh, over a thousand properties took up the offer of the free Smart Water, which is roughly around twenty five percent of four and a half thousand properties. But also while we did that, we also, again, some crime prevention advice as well. Because we were winter properties, people were, they were leaving windows open. What people could just force open and climb in and in and out before you know it. So we're getting a bit of climate advice as well. On the other side of this, it also helped us to find people's properties when it's stolen. If it's always stolen, uh, the police will have a fluorescent light. It can just shine it on to this item, whatever it is. And if a fluorescent light come up, if the Smart Water come up on that, then they, they could track that to the database where all the information is put on. And that will be took back then to the owner of that property. So it's a good tool, it's a good tool. And it does help, it does help reduce the fear of crime as well. So by doing that, that we're reducing the crime, we're putting signs up on lampposts, saying this is a crime production, production burglary scheme. So it does help people feel confident that there's people about and they are there to help them when it comes to burglaries. Uh, so that's a Smart Water act away at the moment.
That, sorry, just one second, just for members may also be interested. We also work very closely with people like pawnbrokers and stuff because they were often getting stuff taken in. So that they could identify stuff. Sorry, Zaff, I don't want to steal your thunder, I just.
In fact, you just took the words out of my mouth, so I'm just going to come on to that.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, that's it, I'm in trouble now, sorry, Zaff.
Uh, what we've done in the past by helping police, uh, when we've had a report of high numbers of burglars in areas, the South Yorkshire Police have asked us to call into pawn shops to make them be aware that property's being stolen. If anyone comes in asking to sell stuff, if they could contact us straight away if possible, and we could go there, see what items were, see if it, if it were on our list. And if it were, if it were on our list, then we would contact the police. Police officers will come uh and take the item away. But the problem was we couldn't trace the people what had gone into the shop because they're just due to shunk straight off to get away from us. So that helps a lot in areas. Uh, what we've also done in the past is help South Yorkshire Police, we're missing people. Uh, it's only two years ago, we got a request from the police on Sniggle. Uh, a white male had gone missing for days. Uh, his daughter hadn't seen him, they were getting worried. So they asked us to patrol Ullsbury Park. So by going out there, talking to members of the public, showing them a picture of the person we were looking for, with the information we gathered, I sent an email to Sniggle. They passed it on to their, to their team, who then went out the day after and found the, and found the male sleeping rough in some bushes. So that were good results for us, good result for police. A brilliant result for the family because we've returned him to his to family. And, and that was just before Christmas, uh, two thousand eighteen. So, so that was a nice Christmas present for them. We've also done uh operations with South Yorkshire Police, Operation Cubic. That's to deal with untaxed cars and uninsured cars. Uh, the reason behind that, we used to come across a lot of cars what were untaxed and uninsured. So we did a list, sent it down to police, who then arranged to do an operation cubic. When we went out with police, we pointed the cars out to them. They rechecked them, if they come up, no insurance, no tax, then the cars were towed away. So that's getting rid of potential dangerous cars and uh, insurance drivers. So that were good results as well. Operation Nevada, uh, I did three of them, three operations with South Yorkshire Police. That was going round with police, youth offending team, the homeless team, uh, identifying underage drinkers, uh, dealing with uh drug dealers, uh, people who carry drugs round. Again, untaxed cars, off-the-road bikes, that became a big problem as well. So we started to target them. The operation coming in line with the weaker action we used to do in areas. That's where you got all your agencies involved, AMF, off-the-road bikes, police officers, youth offending team. But we all pulled together and it was a weaker action where we spent the full week, the full day out on the streets, talking to people, finding out more information, what were happening on the streets. Sometimes we got names of people what were causing these problems, which we later followed up. And in some cases, we served them with ABCs, which were a contract, an ab sexual behaviour contract, what they had to abide by. So the service, what we, or what we're going to deliver in the new roll out is going to be another brilliant tool to work with all our partners, South Yorkshire Police. But not only that, you also, in the new team, you also going to have two qualified crime prevention officers. That will be myself and Alan, who, we just passed the course last year, Level Three, which was run by South Yorkshire Police. Uh, we got us qualification through, well, we got confirmed that we'd passed just before Christmas. And we got us qualification certificate through just after Christmas. So we're qualified crime prevention Level Three officers. So we could basically go out and offer crime prevention to, to people what have been burgled. We're not saying we're going to stop it, but we can make it harder for people to get burgled if people take on board our advice.
Okay, thanks, Zaff. I think you've given us a real, really good example. And I think if you wouldn't mind me just saying, because Zaffa, um, with regards to this training they've had, as far as we, we are aware, they're the only two non-police officers in the whole country that have had it and we want to look at the new wardens. And also, I think, Zaffa's too modest. We get, I get feedback through Zaffa and Alan, through the team leaders. It's people's um reassurance when they see the Warden Service because they wear uniforms on the street. They're a bit of eyes and ears. And I think um Sean had mentioned a meeting we were in today and Anne was in there. Some of the things we've heard coming today, you know, having a, a dedicated Warden Service that would support some of those issues like the off-road bikes we were hearing about. But thanks, Zaff. So Ben, back to yourself.
Yeah, thank you both uh for that. And, and Zaff and Alan, just want to really say congratulations on being the only two non-police officers to pass that course. That's a fantastic uh achievement and something um I'm certainly proud of you for, for doing. And I'm, I can see nods and claps from the rest of the committee. So well done, um, and you've done us all proud with that. Glad you can take that, that forward.
It weren't an easy course, I'll, I will tell you. Because obviously, I'm, because we are just wardens, the other people, what did it have got access to police computers? So, so for us to pass that was a big achievement. was a big achievement. And, and we were told that by Simon Kirkham. He's the one who's put, who put us forward for that training. It's a big achievement for two non-police officers to pass that course. So yeah, I'm proud of it.
And so you should be. Um, so before we move to comments and questions, I just want to actually reflect, because this is an annual sort of report that comes back every year. And I'm sort of mindful that we quite often have the same sort of comments, um, certain things that we'd like to see, like we want to see more visibility every year. And I think one thing that's sort of come through in what, what you've said, and, and certainly anecdotally, is, is that we are seeing more people, um, on the ground, both, uh, from SCC, but also, um, the police. Um, so I think that's something that's welcome. I also think every year we say something along the lines of we need to do more to support victims. And certainly the, the sort of proactive work around going to pawn, pawnbrokers to helping track down, uh, their stolen items, um, is going to be a massive help, uh, to, to, to them. And we always say that we need to be, uh, more proactive in trying to, to stop things. And you've given some great examples of sort of smart water, helping find, find a man who was rough sleeping when his family, we're worried about him. I mean, the work around untaxed cars, I mean, I certainly know in my patch, there's been quite a few, and I thought in particular, um, that, that, that sort of thing would help with. And the, the fact that we're going to have crime prevention officers sort of focused on that in the future, I think is, um, a good level of listening to what we've been saying over previous years. Um, I'm sure we'll give you some more pointers to steer on for the, for the future. So I'll pass over to councillor Adam Hurst, who was the, the first name on, on the list.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chair. Hopefully I'll be able to read my writing. Uh, I'd like to, I was, I was going to make, uh, ask a question at the end of what I'm going to say. I'll say it at the beginning and then I'll go into the other stuff, even if it's a bit more challenging. Because it really, I think it's, uh, congratulations, we shouldn't just leave it a congratulations, well deserved as they are. But I'm just wondering what consideration we've given now that we've shown the council staff can pass a course that police officers can pass. How do we actually start to expand maybe a youth neighbourhood service, uh, warding service? Um, you know, to, to enhance, what is always going to be difficult. Because I know I've been very pleased in my area that we've had an increase in, um, police staff in the area. But we're only just beginning to get back to where we were before the cuts earlier. So I, 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 I think I, I don't want to lose that thread. And as I say, I was going to actually put that at the end to make sure I went on a positive note. But I want to ask a few more challenging questions, I'm afraid. Uh, I might be feeling a bit raw because it came to my attention today that a recent murder in High Green actually involved somebody who I hadn't realised, but had been on my casework about six months previously. Whether or not the murder was, uh, related to those ongoing issues, uh, I wouldn't care to comment. But obviously it, it sort of brings things home. What I do know though, was in the casework, the housing office, the police, CPNs were all involved. But I think in the middle of lockdown, some of the work and the support we can give to do that preventative work is actually rather difficult. So, um, and I know that Maxine, I'm really glad that somebody's feeling optimistic here, Maxine. But I do, I do, I suppose what I would be saying is, yes Sheffield's lucky it's comparatively safe, but it's not completely safe. And there's also a huge difference between how safe you are and how heavily affected you are from antisocial behaviour between one area and another. And that's usually linked to deprivation. So much as I think we should be very glad that we're safer than other large cities, let's not rest on that laurel too much. So it's how do we pick up from where we are? Now, I think you started to say some of that in that you're feeling more optimistic than you were. But I think with any new system, what I, what, what I suppose I would ask, and maybe we discuss next year, is after we've been doing it for a year, how are we actually demonstrating that it's been effective? What have we done well? What have we changed? And what would we like to do better? So hopefully that wasn't too long, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, um, if I could just come back, Chair, if that's okay. Um, the apprentices, yes, we're going to have apprentice wardens, starting with seven. One in each of your areas of the local area committee. So yes, got that. Um, no, I was no, I wasn't meaning to be flippant, there is still, and I know you weren't saying I was. There is still a big job ahead. I think the fact, as you say, um, coming in lockdown, coming out of lockdown, there were probably issues. We haven't picked up the support as much as we could do. And there's work to be done. Part of that, um, having this separate multi-tenure antisocial behaviour team. We will still work very closely with colleagues in housing, where it's a housing tenant. But it will also give us that overview and let us concentrate and potentially look more at the use of ASB powers on one hand, but also that support that we give them. Because I think in the past, sometimes that line's a bit blurred for one officer where if, and it doesn't mean we shouldn't link together. But for instance, one of the behaviours we can, um, sorry, uh, enforcements, we can take out closure orders. Um, often that can be where a property, where there's somebody who's vulnerable and is having people take over the property, like I mentioned, as such as drug dealers. And we, we have a, a difficult sort of ask in how we protect the community with what's going on, but how we protect that vulnerable person. So certainly the sort of things we are looking at is when we're considering closure orders and we've got vulnerable people that are being targeted and cuckoed. Before we move on, we'll have those multi-agency meetings where adult social work will be there, mental health. Because some of those discussions have been happening, but not always everybody sitting around a table and talking. At the moment it's more difficult, but there's, there's certainly ways we know we need to improve on. So, um, thank you for those comments. Yeah, come back in a year. I, i- if I can evidence some of that, then we needed to be doing something different. And certainly so happy to bring some of that back when we come back on how things are working out.
Okay, councillor Wilson.
Thank you. And thank you, Maxine. You actually answered some of my questions as you carried on. And so, so it'll take a minute. And it was in relation to what you were talking about antisocial behaviour. And did I hear you right in that we should send antisocial behaviour to you when it doesn't match up with the police? Because what we've been finding, which I'm sure everybody else has found and saying it's a common problem, um, with the police figures not matching up with what residents are saying. Um, often in, yeah, in that they're saying that, you know, I reported it. Um, and then they don't report it again, or sometimes one report is actually the equivalent of, you know, like five antisocial behaviour incidents. Um, so me and some colleagues went to visit some residents, um, about a week ago. Um, and that, that was the case there. Um, so should, should we send those to you? Or are we thinking more generally, or you don't want specific areas? Because we've got some quite problem areas that we're really struggling to deal with. Um, I, they were also talking about the problems with, um, is it, I can't remember if it's 101, it is, it's 101, isn't it? 101 is for health. Uh, the problem was with 101 and we advised the web chat. Um, and I'm just wondering if that's advised to advise that. I wonder if there are any problems, you know, we don't want to overload them as well and that, that become as bad as the, um, the phone system. But recently that seems to have been a lot better for us. And that's what we've been doing with residents as long as they signed up. Um, and then on a slightly different note, my only other question was, do we know the difference between file and, and sexual crimes? Because I believe on the, um, on the figures, they were kind of linked together. And I can see, um, why that's the case, but I'd still be interested to know. I mean, especially with the light of what, what happened, um, last night in Encliff Park. And that's made me feeling very different to maybe, you know, a fight, a violent fight on West Street after a night out. It'd be quite, quite different crimes. Um, and I've not seen any figures on that. So yeah, that's it. Thank you for answering the others in, in the rest of your presentation.
No, thank you. Um, with regard to antisocial behaviour, yeah, I think there is this, um, area that nobody's probably really, um, investigating unless you've got a social landlord, but there might be some issues there. So yes, definitely. I think all I need to say at the moment, just to manage people's expectations, I'm only just starting the recruitment into that team. So at the moment, there's probably me, Zaffa and Alan and community safety colleagues. So, but as soon as they're in place, um, officers will be linked into, you'll have an ASB officer that's multi-tenure linked in all to your local area committees. So as soon as we start to get that, that out, I'll be getting information out saying, please refer in here. But if Sophie, there's something that's particularly causing you an issue at the moment, by all means, send me some details out this meeting and I'll see if we can move things on a bit in the interim. Um, with regard to, to report it, I think 101 continues to be a challenge. And, and I do understand when people say, I just get fed up of reporting it because it takes me so long. But I guess it's a bit of a mixed message for me. Because a lot of the data and the stats we have to work off our police colleagues, if people don't report to 101 and the issue you've said, police are saying, oh, it's not an issue for us. And we're saying, oh, yes, it is. So, um, I would stress that people do, but you're right, web chat, Crime Stoppers, if that's an issue where it's anonymous. And if it'd be useful, we can just reissue all that advice of where it can be reported to. But yes. Um, violent and sexual crime? Okay, um, so as you can imagine, I've been talking to my colleagues who, who lead on domestic violence quite a lot. Some of it is in violent crime overall, it is. And we're having to look at how we can strip that out. Um, but there are, there is some data linked to, um, uh, sexually related crime. And I think, um, and again, I don't mean this to sound in any way trivialised it because, but some of the biggest areas of concern for women are still in the home. It's not, I'm not saying it's not a big issue, we just need to be careful. So, um, we are working with colleagues on getting some figures on that. So I'll keep pushing that on. And, and Sophie, if that's okay, if, if when I've got something, I could run it by you to let you have a look. And then I can circulate it wider to get some feedback. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, councillor McGowan.
Hi, thanks. Nice to see you again, Maxine.
Nice to see you, Karen. Thank you.
Um, thank you for your presentation. Really interesting. Um, looked what Zaffa was saying about the smart water, because we did something very similar in Burley Ward, where we bought crime prevention packs back in twenty fourteen, I think it was. Uh, we spent our wood pots on it over about three-year period and made sure that everybody that wanted one in, in Burley Ward got one. And, and it included window locks. And I think it had a two-pronged approach. It made people feel safer, but it also told, they put stickers on the windows to tell them that it was, they had a smart water pen in the packs. And so I think, i- i- I think it has really helped. Um, good to see the links with, um, the lax as well. Um, and I'm, you know, really hoping that that's going to, um, um, make it that we can really have some impacts on our local communities. Um, and that we can take things like a more proactive approach. I'm just thinking about, you know, quite luckily, we don't get a lot of antisocial behaviour, as in gangs in parks or anything, um, in Burley Ward. But we do get things around bonfire night where, and we always know it's coming up. But then it always seems to be a bit of a, a, a reaction. You know, you have to end up sending the pla- uh, sending messages to the police and that to get them to deal with it. So, um, it'll be good to like try and work a bit more proactively on that. And I just wondered, that led me to think, how do you work with trading standards and where do they come into this? Because there's a lot of stuff about fireworks and, and kids buying them and then that on the antisocial behaviour. So I just wondered where the boundaries were around that. Um, and around social media, is there anything around there and about scams and things that, uh, that go on? And again, is that a bit of trading standards and things? I'm, I'm not quite sure. Um, and the final thing was around housing. I think the biggest thing for me on antisocial behaviour is around housing. I think that's the biggest part of my casework is, is issues around that. It's either that or repairs. Um, and, and I think there is a, a gap there for, I just wondered, there is a private housing team, isn't there, within the castle? And, and how does that fit in? Is that standing there alone and that you're linking with that, or has that moved in with you? I just wondered what the structure was looking like. Thank you.
Okay, um, fine. So, um, I think, yes, I remember you working on smart water. And just so you know, obviously Zaff talked about it today, but as we move into this new structure, I think we can look at areas and see where else we can run pilots. And, and that, like you say, will be really useful linking into local area committees to understand, well, what's your priority, you know? So we're not having to do blanket approaches across the whole city. With regard to bonfire night, um, I remember, and I know Sean is at the meeting talking to me last year. We always seem to get this slightly wrong and are reactive rather than proactive. And it's the whole dark nights thing. And you know, like you say, gee whiz, this isn't a surprise. So, um, certainly I think we've, um, struggled with not having the safer neighbourhood coordinators. And as I said, they'll be in place within the next couple of months. And one of their lists of priorities is to work alongside police colleagues, fire service, youth services. And let's put a plan at for dark nights period before it happens. Let's look about identifying funding, because often it's really small pots we need to make a difference. We're not talking. So that's on their priority to do. And again, working with local area committees so we can understand for each area. So definitely a priority. Um, we do work with colleagues in, uh, environmental protection, trading standards. Last year we were doing some jury work with them and the police in doing sort of target purchasing around fireworks and underage. But I think they'd be part of these groups. There's probably more we could do there. Social media scams, um, that is, uh, again, trading standards colleagues. But, um, um, as we're forming the new team and have got resources, and you know, I mentioned at the start of this, Sheffield is still one of the largest safe cities. Whenever we have incidents, unfortunately, and I get what they're reported in the star, aren't they? So, and then that contributes to people thinking, we hear about bad things. So I'm talking to, uh, to communications colleagues. How do we start to also get drip feeding messages out? Some of them are positive. And that doesn't mean if there, unfortunately, there's been an incident or a murder or some gunfire discharge in part of the city, that because we've sent out half a dozen good things, people aren't going to. But it lets us get some perspective. So, um, I had talked to Ian Ashmore, but I'll make that point when we're looking at those positive messages. Um, and that could be a message both ways, but let's make sure we're proactive with the scams. Um, housing, yeah, um, since we've separated out this multi-tenure, it is, and, and we, we've still got to work through this, that multi-tenure team under me will deal with wherever we need to use antisocial behaviour powers. So, um, closure orders, um, I'll say for start, um, CB, um, criminal behaviour orders, working alongside the police. Housing colleagues will deal with the sort of tenancy enforcement and eviction. So where it's conditions of tenancy. So Carl Malouli, who's the head of those services now, and he and I are working together. Because we've got to be clear, we want to make sure there's no duplication and how we both benefit this. And those will be the messages that come out to members on who's doing what, that we're, we're working with, but we're not quite there yet. And you mentioned then Karen private housing. Yeah, they used to sit with me. I have been when they were in my service along to the private landlords' meetings and talk to them about antisocial behaviour. And to be honest, I've had comments like, well, what do you expect us to do without tenants? You know, I could go, and I'm saying, hold on, in social housing, you know, we've got probably twenty odd year old women going out to talk to people. You need to take some responsibility. So in this multi-tenure team, that's part of working alongside my colleagues in private housing and the private landlords on some of their responsibilities. And I'll be really honest with you, Karen, that ain't going to be an easy discussion. So I think we'll work with social landlords, because I think they need to come up to the table a bit more. Um, in some areas like Manor and Castle where we've got a lot. But then I will move on to private landlords. And this may be to a degree where I come back to you and, and ask for some support in some ways. Because I think it's, they need to take responsibility for some of the things their tenants are doing, you know, it's not just take the rent. Um, the private housing team has remained in housing alongside housing colleagues. But yes, we work very closely, like in the presentation where I was mentioning about that money from the government on safer streets and, and working, um, with the student landlords, private housing services are involved with that as well. And, and I'm not sure if you're aware of the snog scheme we have in Sheffield, yeah. aware of the snog scheme we have in Sheffield, yeah. And we're linking that in and looking at potentially some of the criteria. If you want to be a student landlord, maybe you need to fit these sort of locks, and you need to do this to protect your tenants and their goods as well. So the links are there, but there's work to do, yeah.
Zaffa, you wanting to come in, jump in?
Yeah, please. Yeah. Just to go back to what councillor said about High Green. I'm not aware that that someone had been killed up there, but we're actually patrolling the area at the moment around Foster Way. Because there's been a number, there's been a number of bin fires up there. So, so we got the job through last week. We went up on Monday. Unfortunately, it's been one of them weeks where we've been on holiday as well. So starting from next week, you will see us in that area most days. So we are patrolling High Green, where we're also patrolling Bow Hill Recreation Park for the police, because our number of crowds want a meeting. We're also doing Brumall, Exeter, Sharrow, Washington Road, and Never Edge. So we do get a lot of work in, but unfortunately, we have to stagger as patrols, where I would like us to do it every day if we can. Because there's only two of us, and we got a number of jobs to come in, we try and get up to these areas every other day. So, so we are patrolling High Green. As for Karen's question, I don't live far from Burley. So I don't, I don't know what you're saying up there. When I've been up there off duty, I have seen some law crime ASB going off, but nothing bigger than law crime. And you're getting kids gathering up, you know, the shops on the main road, just down from the pub.
Yeah, I was gonna say Fretchville Pond area.
Yeah, you're getting the groups gathering in there. But obviously, when I've seen them, I've been off duty. So I am aware of Burley. I don't live, I don't live on Woodford. So, but I hope that answered your questions, councillors and Karen.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, thanks for that, Zaff. So I've not had any other councillors flagged to ask questions, which is highly unusual for this committee. We usually have a lot of questions and put them to officers to task. So.
If I could quickly come in on that.
Yeah, so I'm gonna let councillor Hurst come back in. If anyone does want to ask something, I need, I now see councillor Murphy again, and councillor Richards. Anyone else, stick it in the comments. I'll just take them in the honour that they they come. Okay, councillor Hurst.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for letting me back in. Yeah, and thanks for that, Zaffa. Yeah, I think, quite honestly, yeah. It's certainly what happened in High Green and the murder, that is not a reflection on you and your team. I think it's really, really important to say that. What I do think is, though, I think it is, I think admittedly, it only came to my attention today, this person being on the casework. So I might not be being completely unbiased here. But the points I wanted to make, and I think it is important, is what we're trying to do here is actually nip things in the bud earlier, sooner rather than later. And I think the what we're doing with the wardens is doing that. And I was just a little bit worried that actually, what I do know, and obviously, because it's casework, I can't get into too much detail, what I do know is there had been a lot of input going into some of the issues around the casework. Whether that actually related to the murder, I don't know. But what it would appear to happen is somewhere or another, the multi, the multi agency may have not been as effective there as we would have liked it to have been. But yes, certainly, I think patrolling and stopping the, what was going on in High Green appears to have been a long running feud, rather than antisocial behaviour that needs nipping in the bud. So I did want to be absolutely certain that the example I used was not in any way a comment critical or otherwise of what Zaffa has been doing. Thank you, Chair.
Just sorry councillor, councillor Hurst, if by any chance outside of this meeting, you want to send me that I could look and we could do a bit of a learning exercise. I know we can't change things, but we could make sure we learn for the future. So I'll leave that with you if you wanted to email me on that.
Actually, one thing that would be, because I have actually emailed Gary Bramall from the police, because I'm quite sensitive, what he could tell me. But I might wait a second for him. If I don't get something from him, I might email you and say, could you sort of check what's going on.
That's no problem, yeah.
That's great. Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, sorry, Chair, I thought I'd put mine in chat. But as you quite rightly say, I can't see it now. But anyway, thanks, Maxine and Zaffa for your presentation. My question actually relates to hate crime. I know certainly in the Manor area, it's on the increase, and I'm sure it is in in other areas. Mine relates to people living in registered social landlord properties, then having to leave because of the intimidation and antisocial behaviour around their properties, including things like graffiti, their bins being burnt out, et cetera, et cetera. And I do wonder how much work the RSLs are doing with yourselves and our neighbourhood, community, local police, in terms of actually giving out a very, very clear message to the people who are the perpetrators of hate crime, that we're not going to accept it, they are going to be moved out of the area and out of our properties, be that council or another registered landlord or private housing, that it's just not acceptable. And we are coming down pretty heavy on those kinds of incidents in our local areas. So I'd just like to hear a little bit more about what our strategy is, and what works taking place around those kind of hate crime issues. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Right, where we are at the moment, I think, again, this will be a work in progress. We were without a partnership hate crime coordinator for approximately six months. We've now got one in place, her name's Sylvie Cook, if anybody needs those links. And we're working with her, looking at what we're doing. We, I think in the past, when it's been graffiti, things get moved and not always, because we have targets to move things very quickly. We've certainly just had some graffiti quite a bit round Bramall Lane area, and people were removing it before we'd photographed it. So we've now worked with colleagues to make sure we're always getting photographs, so we can look at it. With regard to the other registered landlords, I'll be honest, and that's something I'll add to the list. I've, I've been to the strategic meeting that Paul would chairs with the landlords and told them I'm setting up this new team, because I think, as I've said, sometimes some of the social landlords are really good. Some of the time, I think they're not as proactive as I'd be expecting of them. So I think, as I form this new team, I want to understand from them how we can help them. Because sometimes, for instance, closure order, social landlords can't take that action, the council or the police have to take it. So if we need to take it on their behalf, how are we going to make those relationships work, for whatever reason, whether it's hate crime? I think what I also want to look at, if there are social landlords in the city that aren't taking action against hate crime or other forms of ASB, all right, we can look at working on your behalf. We can work with your tenants, but the council isn't an easy ride here. You know, we're having to fund our offices, obviously, the social landlords get their rent in. So I'll be expecting either stand up to the mark, or if you want us to pick up some of your cases, we can. But we expect you to pay us for dealing with that service for you, and on your behalf. With regard, we've not, we have got a partnership hate crime plan, which I'm asking the new coordinator to revisit. We're also working on some hate crime training that can be delivered, e-training for for members, for other staff, because we haven't in the past, I'll be honest, held housing associations to account. We haven't held our own housing service to account. And I think it became apparent, I'm not sure if any of you are in the meeting, that there is work we need to do there. So we are starting some of that work. But I think in the past, we have waited for them to ask us for our help. And I think we need to be more proactive going forward. Because as you said, I think we've seen low levels of hate crime and hate incidents at the moment. But I'm sure with lockdown, there's so much we're not seeing, that we will see a bigger increase as we open up. So again, that's a bit of a work in progress. We're talking to them, but need to make sure that strategy, strategy is very clear on what we're expecting from them.
Okay, councillor Richards.
I actually wanted to ask a bit about the going forward, because we're moving on to area based working, and we're going to have area based, oh, community safety teams. Are you expecting those to evolve differently in each area? Or will there be a common level of service, I guess is the word I'm looking for? And will you be reporting those in as part of your annual plan to this scrutiny, if we still have scrutiny? Or or will it just be done to the area committee that it works to?
Okay, good question, Sean Ed. And I'm obviously, I sit in communities, so I'm talking Dawn Shaw and Lorraine and Jason. And I'll be honest, I, with regard, but this is my views, and at the moment, nobody's come to me and said, Maxine, this is what members want. So, you know, if you know something I don't, these things could change slightly, but.
Might be a quick time for members to suggest things at the moment.
I think, definitely. So I think for me, we will certainly do a form of matrix management. So those local committee managers will have antisocial behaviour officers linked to their teams, that we will jointly task, or that will be reporting in locally. With regards to the community safety bit of the world, I think, again, there'll be the seven, well, sorry, we've got five Safer Neighbourhood Coordinators, there's five police teams. So we're gonna have to look at how that works at the moment. But they will be talking to local area committees, what are your priorities? But at this stage, Sean Ed, I thought my view is that the community safety element should stay under one management. It doesn't mean it won't feed into the areas, but I think we need to have some form of consistency on how how that approach works, not what it is, because what might be an issue in one committee may not in another. So antisocial behaviour teams certainly linked into the local area committee, but some matrix management and and linked to the wardens, for instance. See, Alan's joined us, so he's got his IT side. It will, there'll be certainly wardens attached to each of the local area committees. But there may be sometimes incidents where we need groups of wardens, like Bow Hill at the moment, for instance, with the Covid, or if there's areas of community reassurance where we need them. So it might be, hold on, we need to pull the wardens, some of the wardens, not all of them, into this area to work citywide at the moment. So I think there'll be a bit of a mixed bag. My view is that as well as reporting into local area committees on some of that performance data, there also needs to be a citywide approach. Because a lot of the stats, you know, as a core city, I need to understand what it is across the city. When I look at when I'm putting in bids with the Police and Crime Commissioner, it's a city as a whole. So I think there'll be a bit of both. But I'm waiting to hear how that works out. We're willing to work with you. So I think, as you said, Sean Ed, if there's ideas, it would be good to, I'm not saying necessarily here and now, but it would be good to hear them. So you can say to me, as in a nutshell, I don't, no, we don't agree with you on that, Maxine, you've got it right. And I think you need to look at that. And obviously, I'll be talking to Dawn and Lorraine and Jason, who are working on that as well.
Okay, I can just see Penny's brain whirring there as you were speaking. So maybe Penny had some idea.
Not for now, Sean Ed, thank you very much. Yeah. But it would be good, because at the moment, I'm waiting. But I think we just need to be careful, certainly with the community safety and that overview. We don't end up throwing the baby out with the bathwater on what works for us, you know, we can, this can make it better and be more proactive. But some things we need to sort of look after as well.
Alan, are you wanting to come in?
Good evening, Chair and all panellists. I don't know if my mute's come off yet, exactly.
We can hear you fine.
Suddenly I burst into life. I've got about 75, 80% of everything that's been said. I just couldn't get any audio or video. So yes, nothing really more to add to what Zaff or Maxine have said. All I really wanted to add was where we have been patrolling, certainly around Bow Hill, Halfway, Hansworth, and Nowther Edge and Sharrow. The people that we've talked to have been exceptionally unanimous in saying that they're right happy to see us, having a uniform presence. And it certainly gives them a bit more confidence. Especially when we've been walking around, around the, when the kids have been off, around the playgrounds and areas like that, that parents have come up to us and said, it's nice to see, is some sort of presence available? Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, thank you, Alan. In case you didn't hear it before, what Zaff said about you both passing your course. And so just to say congratulations to you. That's a fantastic achievement to be the only two non-police officers in the country to have done so.
Thank you very much. As Zaff said, it wasn't an easy course to do. Certainly got the two brain cells shuffling around a bit. But thank you very much, everyone, for your comments.
Usually, the things in life that are worth doing aren't the easy ones. So massively well done. Okay, so I've not had any other councillors flagged to ask questions. So last chance, and I'm not seeing anyone waving frantically. So we'll move on from this item. So thanks again, Maxine, Zaff and Alan, for your presentations, for your input, your insights and the work that you're doing to help keep keep us safe. I think there's something, that there's sort of, for me, three big things that happen in relation to crime. There's all sorts of national figures that we can tinker around with, around sort of poverty, educational attainment, other sort of factors around demographics. Then there's the direct involvement that we have through, through the council, and then sort of the inputs that we have. And I think we're doing a great job there. And then there's something else that's just uniquely about Sheffield, that there's something about our city that seems to genuinely do better in this area than other places. So the fact that our crime rate's a lot lower than Leeds, when you look at the demographics, isn't just good news, it's absolutely fantastic. And for me, the starkest reminder of that is the riots that happened in 2011, when Mark Duggan was shot in Tottenham. And there was riots in London and riots in Manchester. And, you know, you sort of list the cities of the UK, but it didn't happen here. So there's this third sort of mystery Sheffield factor that I think we all should be grateful for as well, and just just worth acknowledging. So.
No, thank you. Thank you for that. And of course, I do rub that in when I speak to my colleagues in other cities as well. Pissly proud of Sheffield there. Thank you. And thank you, members, for your support as well. Thank you. Right, thank you. Bye bye from us then. We'll leave you to it. Thanks.
Thanks. Right, so yeah, we just asked, obviously, to note that. So there's nothing to, to move a recommendation on a whole vote unless anyone wants to move something here. I don't think, no. Right, so the next item is the work programme and future work programme. So obviously, as it is, it's largely a matter of what we've done. And I think if you sort of reflect over the year, and actually, the work we've done hasn't been over the past year, it's been over the past few months, really, given everything that happened with lockdown, the fact that we were the last committee to start formally meeting again. And I think we've actually achieved quite a bit. And I think we've actually achieved quite a bit in the, the six months that we've been going through things. Obviously, our first meeting was a useful look into domestic abuse and sexual abuse. And we actually had some good practical input into some of the work they were doing. And we looked at Hanover, and then we looked at the fire, the fire integrating risk management plan, which doesn't sound like a very interesting document, but if you look at, again, the work the committee did the year previously, that fundamentally changed the fire services approach, and we tweaked it again further here. I think that really shows the value of the work we've done. Obviously, we were disappointed with the housing repair service report, but then got some great insights through the homelessness work and rough sleeping that had been done and some of the absolute superstars and heroes of our city doing the work that, that they've done. And I mentioned what we've, we've done here tonight. I think we've also shown the council that we can do more in terms of scrutiny. We, we've crammed our years' worth of meetings into a six-month period. I, for one, think the next year, we, we should be looking to do more. If we indeed want to do more, we should be led by the areas that we want to look in, rather than fixed meeting dates that get fixed in May. And so I'd be happy to advocate for that for, for, for anyone. And so in terms of future work, obviously there's a list there on the sheet, as I just bring it up. Housing repairs, further update, that should be in block capitals, bright red, screaming colour. Needs to be there, done quickly. But then we've got social housing, fire, the crime and ASB and selective licensing. Is there anything else anyone would like to add to that list at this time?
Chair?
Yeah.
Well, I suggest that we do look at hate crime in the future as well and just see how that strategy development is coming along. Because I, I don't know about anybody else, but I was a little concerned that we don't have a particular running strategy at the moment. And I think one's needed, and I think it would be good if we were to not just look at it, but help and make some recommendations to that as well. And my other point is, when we're looking at social housing, could we also perhaps put social housing slash registered social housing? Because I think often the same issues apply for both. Thanks Chair.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thanks councillor Murphy, we can add those to the list. Councillor McGowan?
Yeah, I'm just going to suggest having an update on what Maxine's just told us tonight and about, you know, in a year's time and the likes are in place and this. So, you know, and that monitoring that I think someone raised about how do we know if it's been successful? And it's working, so I think, you know, that.
So I'm just going to add something myself that I think I would like us to look at that came to me whilst we're hearing that. I think I'd like to look at the community justice panels. So anecdotally, we hear that they're effective. Could we do more? What, what, what could be done? Are we recruiting all the volunteer facilitators that we need to make them run as, as well as we can? So I think I'd like to see that, that on the list. Deborah?
Thanks Chair, just wanted to say that some of the issues that you're raising around hate crime and the community justice panels, all part of the information that you've received this evening. You don't of course have to limit yourself to one annual report from the community safety partnerships. You can, and good practice would suggest that you do ask for individual items throughout the year as well. So they can be brought whenever you, you would like them to be really in the new work programme. You don't have to wait until the end of next year and to look at them as part of the annual report, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, is there anything else anyone wants to add to this before we move to close? No? Okay, so obviously, just before we sign off, I want to say a massive thank you to, to Deborah, to Jenny, to Alice, to Emily, and also to Kate Sheldon, who has sits through more council meetings than is healthy for anyone to sit through. You, you've all been a great support to us this year, as always, as you always are. But we appreciate it, so if I just give you a clap and. Well done.
Yeah, well done everybody, thank you.
Yeah, so thanks a lot everyone for your input over this year. Like I said, I think we've achieved quite a bit in unusual and challenging circumstances, so.
Thank you everybody.